...in 2016, Chair Trina Vossen.
Here.
Commissioner Bland, Commissioner Chapin, Commissioner Chen, Commissioner Devonshire, Commissioner Goldblum, Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Ludwig, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Voss.
Here.
Okay, Commissioners, the first item on the agenda is an application for our Certificate of Appropriateness to the Borough of Brooklyn, Document Number 184757. This is 100 Clark Street located within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival Style house built in 1852 and later altered, and the application is to reconstruct the building.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mrs. Shaken Preservation Staff, the 100 Clark Street is also known as One Hundred Place, and it is at the corner here of Clark and Monroe. This is what the building looked like originally, and we hope that we can look back again. This is what it looked like at the time of designation. The stoop had already been removed by then, and this is what it looked like a number of years ago after a portion of the facade collapsed. In 2007, the Commission approved adding story onto the rear. The Commission approved this new competition as well as some restoration work and some changes to the fenestrating on the Clark Street facade. And then in 2008, much of the building was demolished. These are photos of what it currently looks like. It's missing tops and floors and much of the rest of the main building. And in 2011, the Commission approved reconstructing the building. Unfortunately, that permit expired, so they are now back to do work that was previously approved, though they're not currently proposing this new competition. And there are some minor changes to the fenestrations to be architected.
Good morning, Commission. My name is Ben, and I'm the designer and contractor. As mentioned, One Monroe or One hundred Clark sits on the corner here, Monroe and Clark Street. And this was the, how it stood originally, Mansard roof stoop. And so there's sort of a main house and an extension, if you will, that covers up most of the lot. It, this is the sort of previous state of it. There's a large extensive fire escape on the Clark Street side. And this is the designation you can see there. There are the fire escapes and a number of little bathroom windows. It's a multifamily dwelling. Currently, what's standing is essentially the bottom floor and half. This wall collapsed in, I think, 2008. This has been going on about 10 years. This is all with previous owners. So the building was sold after some extended issues with the tenants in the building. Then the following owner had a proposal that included the Mansard extension, or the Mansard roof on this extension. And then I think largely 2008 and all of that happened, there was bankruptcy, and the current owner took possession and ran into some bad luck. Code changing and the DPP and water connections, that sort of thing, that finally then the landmark permit expired. So the way that this, the way that this presentation reads is on the bottom is previously approved landmark application that includes the new proposal that shows largely, I think, that the plans have changed on the inside, but it's still a multifamily. And then there's a little key on the upper right that shows in red what's changed, so you don't have to play games with it. So I'll walk you through the changes. They're relatively straightforward. On the first floor, it's largely the elimination of a rather elaborate garden fence that ran around Clark Street. And the relocation of the entry door to the building up to the line of window, to line of windows further west, and some slight modification of the windows. You'll see that more clearly in the elevations.
Was the garden historical, or just, was that something?
It is original, but it's not there today. So if you go back here, it's based on this. And there've been some issues with DOE about, they weren't, they were consistently getting the applicant an objection because the property lines at the face of the building. And there's a hope to go back to them at some point and get a revocable consent or whatever's needed to come back. But right now, that's holding things up, so we pulled that out of the application. On the second floor, there's really, here, there's some minor changes in the dimensions in the back. This is not visible, but there's a terrace sort of on this extension part that has gotten, I believe, a little smaller. And there's a correction based on the fresh survey of the depth of the building. But it's not really a design change, it's more a correction. The same thing is true on the third floor, with the exception of the elimination of these two rear windows, which are not visible. The largest, I'd say the largest change is, in the previous application, there, this is behind that Mansard roof, so there was a bedroom, and then this sort of enclosed terrace with a spiral stair to the top of it, which we've eliminated completely and put a roof terrace here with a perimeter planter that pulls the rail out of view and the, putting in place of a window, a door in that location. And then here, again, it's the Mansard being removed. And there are, this is at the dormer level of the, of the main house. These, this one stays in the middle, but these two have shifted in a little bit because one of the changes that's had to take place here is that we're structuring this building now as a steel frame because the existing masonry walls can't support the upper floors. So this is a, there's a column here that forced that, this dormer in slightly, and we've kept this one symmetrical. So you'll see that more clearly, the effect of that in the elevation. And then at the roof level, we've moved these condensers. They've miraculously gotten much smaller and are placed over here, sort of away from the street. And then there's an elevator bulkhead that's been brought in next to the stair bulkhead, which is a little bit wider. That elevator bulkhead ends just above rail height on the roof. You'll see that in the elevation as well. So this is what was previously approved. You see the Mansard in the back, which wasn't original. And then we've, they somehow, they flat sighted basically in their approval before, I don't know if they didn't have a survey, but the actual grade is what we put in red, so there's a slight correction for that. But this is, this is what we're proposing today, which is the removal of the Mansard, I guess it's not a removal, we're just removing that from the previous application. The, you can see that there's a rail there that's pushed back, it shouldn't be visible. The two dormers are a little bit closer, I think if you go back, you can see slightly the difference there. And then this door has been relocated from the line of the center windows to these. So basically, these, the door and the window, they're meant to, there's some minor adjustments to these windows and that door that you can see if you pull it back and forth. The front facade has stayed the same. There's still the stoop going in. The only difference is the, this Mansard, I mean, it's the stair bulkhead, which won't be visible from the street on this side. These are the other elevations, minor corrections, this where the grade is. There's the removal of the, of that Mansard, the rear elevation if you want to see, but this is, you know, the removal of the Mansard in those two windows. And then frankly, all of these, the previous applicant did really pretty detailed drawings of all of architectural elements, and all of those are gone now. These are simply, all of those re-drafted. I assume that they're correct. They look pretty good. We went over them and re-drew them in great detail. But these are all of those, as well as their street stage.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Right, we have one speaker, Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. As our committee did in the previous proposal, we wholeheartedly support the current proposal to rehabilitate the building and restore its facades, to rebuild and restore the top two floors of the large corner house facing Monroe Place, including the Mansard roof level, and to restore the three-story addition along Clark Street. Only the bottom three stories remain of the five-story corner house today. This house has suffered abuse and neglect for decades and still stands a decade later as an eyesore in our community. It could be among the distinguished works of architecture that give Brooklyn Heights its special sense of place and its famous historic ambience, but unfortunately, 100 Clark Street is a wreck. In the intervening years since 2006, this corner house has suffered additional neglect as well as partial demolition of the top two stories in 2008 by the Department of Buildings. It has been stabilized and scaffolded for many years. The new proposal and the approved application differ in several respects, however. The Monroe Place facade will be restored as per the original approved application details. The restoration of the masonry and of the graceful oriel windows, the recreation of the wide stoop and entry door, cast iron railings, and recreated slate Mansard roof with new ornamental metal railings are identical to the approved application of 2006. The previously approved roof stair bulkhead maintains the same standing seam details. An elevator bulkhead is proposed with identical detailing. The proposed quantity of rooftop mechanical equipment is reduced, and the proposed location is not visible from the street. We support the proposal along Clark Street to return to the historic scale and detail of three stories without the addition of the Mansard roof. We note that the door and window openings along the Clark Street facades of both the front and rear buildings appear to have been altered several times in the 20th century, and we believe that the proposed plan, including those modifications from the approved 2006 plan, is a harmonious rationalization of these facades. The approved 2006 application included the architectural iron railing restoration along the Clark Street facade. This has not been approved in the application process at the Department of Buildings. We believe it should be approved. Naturally, in the restoration that is this ambitious, there are a myriad of details that need to be gotten right, from the nintles to the door frames. We urge the commission expert staff to closely monitor all shop drawings, millwork details, masonry specifications, in order to achieve a truly accurate and successful restoration. Our committee looks forward to keeping an eye on the progress of this welcomed restoration. We find this a worthy project. We ask the Commission to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? If there are no speakers, Community Board too waves its opportunity to review this application. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, if there are no questions for the applicant, we can close the hearing. Right, comments? Fred, do you like to go first? Yes.
Yeah. If Brooklyn Heights has any blighting influence left at all, which I don't think it does, it maybe it's, maybe it's this one house in this one corner. And it's been a sad, blighting influence, I would say, for any number of years. Judy Stanton's testimony was certainly encompassing in the history, sad history of this, of this property. I think the whole neighborhood welcomes such a moment here when we, when we can restore this house almost completely to its former glory. It was, it was a fine house, and it was a sad day when the Buildings Department came here and convinced us that they had to take down the top two floors, and there it sat all this time. In any event, I couldn't be happier to see it. And I think the work that's being proposed is not only appropriate, it's stellar.
Thank you. Wellington?
Yeah, I'm glad to finally see this moving ahead. I didn't realize a tropical storm Irene did so much damage on, that was in a hurricane.
Plenty of other problems.
All right, are there any other comments? Okay, then we move to decision. Fred?
I should say, I saw this building. I walked by it on the way here this morning, so about 45 minutes ago, I was walking by it. In a manner of 100 Clark Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, this is an application to reconstruct the building. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that reconstructing the historic building will return a significant contributing building to the streetscape and to the historic district, and will strengthen the relationship between this house and other historic houses on the street. That the height and massing of the building and the proportions, details, and design of the primary facades will match the features of the historic building. That the fenestration changes to the Clark Street facade are similar to those previously approved under Certificate of Appropriateness 07-5311, and maintain the orderly pattern of window openings that is characteristic of classically derived styles of architecture. That shifting this, the Clark Street entrance over one bay will not detract from the special architectural character of the building and will maintain the design and details of the historic entrance surround. That the, that while the proposed rooftop bulkhead will be slightly larger than the previously approved bulkhead, it will have a similar amount of visibility from the public thoroughfare. That the proposed materials, including wood windows, bays, and doors, brick and cast stone facades, slate, shingle roofs, and iron cresting will return the historic building, restore historic materials to the building. That the proposed fiberglass cornice will match the appearance of the historic cornice. That the new stoop and entrance and areaway railing will restore important historic features. That the proposed new main entrance will match the neighboring house, which is of a similar age and style. That the proposed rooftop railing on the rear extension will be minimally visible from public thoroughfares. And that the proposed scope of work will restore the historic appearance of the building and will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the street and the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the second item is an application for our Certificate of Appropriateness to the Borough of Brooklyn, Document Number 187789. This is 380 Clinton Avenue, AKA 381 Vanderbilt Avenue, located within the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is a neo-federal style house designed by Hertz and Talan and built in 1909, and a colonial revival style garage and house attributed to Hertz and Talan and built in 1909. The application is to modify a wall and construct a garage.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Andy Jones, Preservation Staff. This application is recreating Clanton Avenue, which features a key block lot with a house on the west side of Clanton Avenue, and a carriage house and a brick wall on the east side of Clanton Avenue, the historic historic district. The application is to remove a portion of the wall on the avenue, and construct a garage in its place. The applicant is here to discuss the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Mary Garrett, and I'm the preservation consultant for this project. With me is the architect Larry Jones, and we're going to be discussing this. 380 Clinton is, is a mansion designed by Hertz and Talan in 1909. We're talking about the back, which is the carriage house. I do want to point out, though, that it might be possible to see the carriage house from this little, not really alleyway, but little area from Clinton, but with difficulty. This is the designation photo and the tax photo for the carriage house, which was built at the same time, probably as carriage house, likely as carriage house for the mansion. Slightly different style, but kind of in the period, the collective period. Here's the carriage house today. It's brick, like the, like the main house. This is a street that had carriage houses. Most of them are gone, but there are still some left. Here's a close-up of the carriage house. This is the wall in question. There's a wall on each side of the carriage house, and what we're proposing is to keep most of the wall, but remove some and fit a garage in. This is the back, so this is what you see from the back of the mansion. This is the yard, and this is the side of the carriage house, inside. I'm going to give a, sorry about that, I'm going to give this over to Larry Jones, who's going to talk about the whole concept.
Thank you. So we've been working on this project for now, going on four years of the whole site. We've come to a number of permits that we've gotten to restore. The main house is almost complete. We have the permit for the loggia and the terrace and sort of a garden structure, which we just received several months ago. And early on in the process, they actually bought this property through the fact that it had a carriage house. And of course, it never occurred to them that the carriage house was built in 1909 and doesn't really fit modern vehicles. Well, it hasn't been a carriage house for quite some time. It's sort of a caretaker's house. You can see the interior layout, a lot of that dates from probably when it was Borough Commissioners or the Borough President's home from the 20s to the 40s. So our thinking was, was to save and preserve the house, the carriage house, to reconstruct a garage in its place. So the issue became the garage, another important element of the site is a large lawn. So the lawns are important, and you'll see the later pictures of how the house is, really shows itself to that of a broad lawn and canopy. So the idea was to reuse part of the garden wall and have the garage right at the Vanderbilt Street side, as most of the carriage houses still have garages. Essentially, the Vanderbilt side is also of, 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 and carriage houses. These, these are the carriage houses that serve the mansion. Let's go back to this. So currently, we have a garden wall. This, actually, the property stops here. The carriage house is on the property wall on this side. On the other side, we have the garden wall, running bond brick, as the whole house is built for that, with the soldier course at the top and then the header brick across the top. So what we're proposing is to reconstruct, salvage the brick, rebuild it as the facade of our garage to match the, and also have matching doors, which we have on the existing carriage house, and then to continue this sort of line of, of, of brick all the way across the property. We also have a small doorway, which will go through the right-hand side of the garage to the backyard. So currently, there's the rolled-out gate, there's a portion of the wall. Now, the wall's built with basic brick on both sides, which is great, because that allows us to reuse as much brick as possible. And we're actually going to be able to do the whole of the year on the original brick of the date of the garden wall. And throughout this restoration, we've been able to use, reuse the existing materials, both in the house and in the other buildings. As you can see, the brick wall continues here. We're going to continue that line with the sloping, the sloping header brick at the top, and across, we continue that line all the way across, and that will be the line of the garage all the way across. And then a running soldier course should be right above our doorways, just like there are on the carriages. And on the garden side, they've chosen to do something a little more open. So we've broken the wall up on the, on the Vanderbilt side. We're concerned about keeping it seeming more like a wall, so we'll just add the one door, just like we had the gate, one gate. But on this side, they're going to sort of break it out and soften it a little more and sort of with the style of the asymmetrical carriage house. And these are sections. So the section through the garden wall, since we're preserving the wall, we've got, basically have a stone footing and foundations, which we'll preserve. We'll be building a modern concrete slab underneath the garage, and then that wall, although the veneer will be matching with the garden wall, we're going to have a foundation to hold the cars. The roof will be about 18 inches below the paraply wall.
What's the clear height of the garage itself?
Excuse me?
What's the clear height of the garage?
Ten feet.
Ten feet. Do you need something as tall as that, or is it falling a?
Well, the 10 feet allows us, the doors to open. So actually, it's about a ninth or clear once you're inside the garage. And then we're able to, that's really the same height as these. So we look at the cars that were at the age, I'm not sure what cars it leaves a family own, but the cars at that age actually were quite high, and they really had huge undercarriage. You had to climb into them. So, and they were barrel, so the doorways are barrel, I think, partly designated. We would have built our cars in the doorway.
Yes.
I just noticed that, you know, in the existing condition, that, that those two brick piers really stood out, and it really articulated, accentuated, whereas in your new proposal, it's sort of blended in especially. And I wonder if it's possible to create a feature that less stands out a little bit more, because you can see the, especially in drawing 11, you will see that there's a difference. You can see clearly the delineation. And I think that the existing one is nicely proportioned, whereas this one, in your proposal, sort of like, it took it to a different direction.
Right. So we looked at both of those, and really, we kind of, and it's kind of, we really looked at it strongly as, I guess, when we saw the entire elevation of the street, the garden wall becomes an important element, rather than those, the piers were sort of negated entry to an estate, I guess, that really hadn't been done with brick, like a lot of our historical buildings, still used on the wood. So I know, we went through a couple variations of that, and we ended up having piers at the end, which didn't, which read actually more industrial, as if it were a steel-framed building rather than a brick wall. And then we realized also, we were coming out into the sidewalk like that, a bit. So we wanted to create like a smooth line, because actually, we have a solder course, and this really enforces the wall all the way along here. And that actually, you can't see that, I think we have it in some of our photographs, actually continues on the wall of the adjacent house, which on the landmark photo from 1940 was another garage. And on the designation photo, you'll see it was, they had rebuilt the wall, the garden wall, which looks original, because it's now 40 years old, probably. So it's aged and polluted, but there's a work to keep that continuous wall. We looked at both.
Yes. Fred?
I noticed that the existing doors, the narrow ones that are no longer in use as doors into a garage, are unpainted and just weathered wood or something, and that the new doors would match that. Is, is that a typical condition, or wouldn't, would it have more likely been painted?
Most of the other ones that I'm seeing are painted. These have been unpainted for a very long time, certainly since designation, and we thought we'd match what was there. But yeah, they certainly, like in the country, they're always unpainted. But in the city, probably, they were, or they didn't look like it. I'm sorry, I'm wrong. They were painted in the designation photo.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. My question is sort of...
My question sort of relates to Wellington's. I think I don't really entirely understand why the width of the big portal has to change. It seems to me that cars, sort of one at a time, can get in and out with the existing width and those two piers. Am I wrong about that?
Well, it's going to be a four-car garage, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're not backing out at the same time onto the street, so it's not clear to me why, in fact, it needs to change. Yeah, so what?
Yeah. So, really, as this is related to two doors, if this were the open, you wouldn't really be able to maneuver.
Right. So, you need only three doors, three cars. I see. Right? Three cars would be able to do it, but two, but four would not. I see. Right.
And what they're using is for, you know, parking, it's actually guests, visitors, family. The carriage house is used for the guests, the guest house.
Actually, the fork. Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this item? No speakers, and Community Board Two waves their opportunity to review the application.
Twice in a row.
Twice in a row. Must be summer months. Any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right. Comments? Yes?
I agree with Wellington that I'd like them to preserve some of that sense of a gate, or at least some, you know, gesture towards that, even in that new wall that they're building and the widening of the garage door, to try to preserve something of that gatehouse element that was there before.
So, you mean those, sort of the piers?
The piers, yeah.
Or create the piers into the new design?
Yes.
Okay, but it won't be at the same location, right? So, we, but it just will, it'll frame that?
Yes, just to frame it. Not in the same size, but the bigger door with some piers there.
Other comments?
The one other thing is obviously, you know, the property still has extra depth, so in case you, if anybody's concerned about the width of the garage door, there's room for slight depth for them to go further back in. That's an option.
But the garage door?
You know, to her point before about the marure, if you want to narrow it slightly, you can have the cars go deeper, in which case, then you can do the turn without a problem.
Okay. All right. Other comments? I'm not trying to understand the depth issue, but I think that, I mean, I don't, I think what they're proposing is actually pretty straightforward, but if you, if the commissioners feel that they should accentuate the piers, we can, I mean, I don't have any strong feelings. I think it's, you know, to me, it seems like as simple as possible would be better than trying to frame it, because I think the carriage house is more important than the garage opening. Yes.
I think I agree with you. I've walked by this property several times, actually, and the piers make sense when there's a wrought gate there. They enframe the gate. Once that gate is gone, and right now, there's a grotesque industrial door, to somehow then move those piers over and emphasize an opening that no longer exists, I think would be problematic. And certainly, if you're abutting one of those piers to the building next door, it is even more awkward. So, I think I would vote for leaving it the way they've designed it.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Wellington? Camer, okay? Okay, so we can move to decision.
How do we feel about the finish on the doors? Painted, unpainted?
Yeah, I think it's historically, it would have paint, right? So, I think we should ask them to do that then.
Okay, so.
They could work with staff on that?
So, painted, painted, no piers?
Well, just as-is.
As-is. Okay. In the matter of docket number eighteen dash seven, seven, eight, nine, three eighty Clinton Avenue, also known as three eighty-one Vanderbilt Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, the application is to modify a wall and construct a garage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the removal of a portion of the utilitarian brick garden wall will not result in the loss of a significant architectural feature, that a portion of the historic wall be retained and well-integrated into the design of the new wall and garage, that the presence of a garage at this location is consistent with the historic development of the east side of Vanderbilt Avenue, which historically featured service buildings associated with mansions along Clinton Avenue, that the garage will be simply designed and significantly smaller than and set at a distance from the main house and carriage house, and will only occupy a small portion of the rear yard, thereby helping the structure to retain a harmonious secondary presence at the site, that the garage and pedestrian entrance door will match the historic carriage house in terms of materials, and will utilize proportions and design details which will recall aspects of the carriage house, thereby helping to unify the composition of these elements, and that the new brickwork will match the historic brickwork at the carriage house and existing wall in terms of materials, coursing, brick, and joint sizes, details, and finishes, further supporting the unity of the design. However, I note that the, although the stained finish at the garage and pedestrian doors will match a modern finish at the carriage house entrance doors, this finish is not in keeping with finishes typically found at service buildings associated with residences of this type, style, and age, and will draw undue attention to the doors. Therefore, we recommend that the applicant work with staff to develop a paint color for the doors, in keeping with the historic color palette of buildings of this type, style, and age.
Is all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay. The third item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Brooklyn, docket number eighteen six, six, nine, two. This is three sixty-eight Clinton Street, Cobble Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house built in eighteen forty-three. The application is to replace the basement entrance door, modify the rear facade and rear extension, alter window configurations, and install a deck.
Good morning, Commissioners, Cape Force Preservation Staff. The application is for three sixty-eight Clinton Street, located on the east side of the street between Kane and DeGraw Street, in the Cobble Hill Historic District. It is located on DeGraw Street, and the rear facade is partially visible from over a one-story garage. The proposal is to replace the basement entrance door at the front with the, from a gate to a solid door, modify the rear facade and rear extension, alter rear facade window configurations, and modify mason reopening to the top floor of the rear facade. Views of the upper stories of the rear facade and extension are visible from DeGraw Street. Skip ahead just to show you these. So, this is the building here. It's not this one, so you can see that later. And this is the maximum visibility that we're going to have. It's, you begin the building after this. You're never seeing the full rear facade. It is from a limited vantage point. The previously approved staff-level work is also shown on this presentation.
Hi. My name is Charlie Tang. I'm the architect of this project. As Kate previously pointed out, it's in the Cobble Hill Historic District. One house is in, on the corner at DeGraw. This is the nineteen forties tax code on the left and the nineteen sixty-nine photo. Our house is three sixty-eight, here, from a mansion house on the left, corner house. And that corner house is this deeper, which is why you're feeling partially, because we're, and this is the condition of the house as it is today. On the front, we're proposing to remove the existing rock area here, which is not original to the house, but a solid painted wood door. There's also metal plating around the opening, and we're proposing to remove that metal plating and patch the area around it with stucco to match the existing stucco of the stoop. The owners would prefer a solid door for security and privacy reasons, and also to maintain the entryway by preventing leaks, and so they're coming to that. Their inspiration was the corner lot house, which is set up with a brick, and that also has the solid door. And there's other houses up and down the block that have a mix of gates and solid doors. We'll show you some of them up and down the block.
Your proposal is to remove the gate, is that right?
Our proposal is to remove the gate and replace it with a gate similar to the one at three seventy, which is the corner building.
Oh, you're going to remove it and put another gate?
Uh, sorry, put a wood door.
Door, wood door, okay.
Yes. Here are photos of the existing rear of the house. There is an existing extension that matches with the extension on the other side of three sixty-six Clinton. They both have extensions and similar massing, but the window pattern on both extensions is slightly different. Ours is four bay, and the house of three sixty-six is three bay. We had previously removed, received Landmark's approval and staff permission, removed the existing red aluminum siding in order to see what was underneath it. And once, these are photos of it being removed. This is our house. This is three seventy Clinton on the corner, and this is three sixty-six Clinton, which has a similar addition. Once the siding was removed and the stucco was removed, you found existing brick in fairly good condition that needs to be reconnected. Arched stone, arched tops and stone sills in these windows. So, we're proposing to keep the window pattern in this area, very similar to where it is in the arch tops. At the upper floor, third floor terrace, set back, this is the original exterior wall that was, and the addition is in front of it. We also removed the aluminum siding, and there's also a brick there, but the stucco has not been removed in these photographs. This is a view of the neighbors' terrace at three sixty-six Clinton, to show the similar massing and similar terrace and similar window pattern. This is a view from DeGraw Street showing what's visible and to show the parapet condition. This is our house at three sixty-eight, and this is the neighbor's house at three sixty-six. Our proposal is also to remove this gutter and downspout, and the brick actually stops a little bit short of the finished floor of the deck, so we're also proposing to build up about ten inches of masonry so that the edge of this, the top of this brick is not aligned with the terrace. These are existing and proposed rear elevations, as you can see, starting from the ground going up at the garden level. The garden level here, there's one existing French door and three double-hung windows. We're proposing to replace that with two French doors and two fixed windows in the middle. These are not from old streets. On the parallel floor, we're proposing to add a deck and replace the four double-hung windows with two French doors and two fixed panes of glass. These windows are also not visible from the street, although the front of the deck, the front edge of the staircase of the deck on this side is partially visible from the street. On the second floor, we're proposing to replace the four double-hung windows with four casement windows. These two windows are visible from the street, which is partially visible from the street. And on the third floor terrace, set back, there's an existing French door with two double-hung windows that will replace it. We're proposing to use the opening of the existing French door for a casement window, and to combine these two windows with one larger opening with a single French door and a single piece of fixed glass. This window is partially visible from the street, as you'll see in the renderings. This window is not visible from the street. We're also proposing to raise the mason repair foot edge about ten inches. You can see here that it's, the existing condition is slightly lower than the finished floor of the terrace. We're also proposing to remove the gutter and downspout and make it a real drain in the new terrace. This is a section through that rear addition, showing the ten inches of masonry that were added here, and also the proposed deck and staircase down. And this is a view from DeGraw Street, showing the relationship between the neighbors' terrace and our terrace, and the, when these were made, the red siding was still on here, and this shows the exposed brick, the existing exposed brick on the rear and the proposed casement window. This is another view further down to DeGraw Street to show sort of the maximum visibility, which is, that's the second window on the left, and that's the third window of the rear facade. This is the previous aluminum siding, this exposed brick, and these are the casement windows. And that's the proposed window on the left side of the third floor terrace. You can't see the, you can't see the door, and this is the ten inches of brick in the higher, so that is covering that stuff. These are interior floor plans in the house, previously approved for reference, and this is the front of the house. Work on the front of the house was previously approved at staff level.
Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have one speaker, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. This applicant has proposed sensitive alterations to the rear, but looking to the future, when the next owner may propose a rear extension and bump out, we ask that the top row windows be preserved with their punched openings. Perhaps this large window in that area could be moved to a lower floor. And while the deck is not of concern, HGC found the choice of tilt-turn windows unusual, and some simple double-hungs would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, do we have any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, then we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes, Cam?
Usually, we get the top windows matching the adjacent in the row, so could we get something like a double-hung or at least the three window openings on the, what would that be, third floor? Where he has the larger window, could it just go back to the three matching the row? The three windows in the row?
You mean on the top floor?
Yes.
Yeah, but they could flip the door to the one on the right if they wanted the door where it is with the picture window. So, just have three openings, two windows left, center, and then door on the right.
I could take the door on the right, yeah.
The door can be on either side, right? It could be a window.
Yeah, I think they put it on the right, and it's, and I think because of the visibility, there's a preference for it to be on the right.
Right, right, right. Okay. Yes.
Although the, I don't have an issue with the windows on the rear being casements, but because they are visible from a public right-of-way, they, in my opinion, should at least have the appearance of being double-hung windows with a, with a, either a real or false meeting rail in the middle of the window.
So, that would be, and the windows that are, just for the visible windows, all the windows?
Their choice.
Okay, but the visible ones should, should have that. Okay, that's a comment. Others? Any concerns about the door in the alleyway being changed? Okay. All right, so why don't we ask them to, the top floor, go back to the three punched openings and, you know, they can have their choice, which side they want to have their door. And Commissioners, how do you feel about the introduction of, okay? Okay, so I think some Commissioners wanted, others don't feel so strongly about it. Okay. All right, Addie?
Yes. In the matter of three sixty-eight Clinton Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District, it's an Italianate-style row house built in eighteen forty-three, and the application is to replace the basement entrance door, modify the rear facade and rear extension, alter window configurations, and install a deck. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Cobble Hill Historic District, and I recommend approval with some modifications finding that the, that none of the work will alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features, that the modifications at the top floor will not disrupt an intact, highly-uniform row, that the limited proportions of the alterations to the rear of the building will only be seen in oblique views at a distance from such locations, that the slight increase in the height of the parapet at the modern rear addition will not significantly increase the overall scale of the addition or overwhelm the neighboring properties, and will help to conceal the existing gap between the existing deck and the roof of the addition, that the removal of the framing around the existing modern entrance surround at the side of the stoop will help return the perceived opening size closer to the historic condition, that the neighboring buildings in the row feature a wide variety of modern solid doors and gates at the side of the stoop, therefore, the presence of the door will not diminish the unity of the row, and that the black painted finish for the windows and doors will be in keeping with his- And that the black painted finish for the windows and doors will be in keeping with historic color palette of buildings of this type, style, and age. However, I find that the replacement of two openings with one wide opening at the top of the floor or of the rear facade will not recall the character or rhythm of the historic punched openings and will diminish the unity of the openings at the top floor of the buildings in this portion of the row. And that the proposed single light casement windows will not match the historic windows at this building in terms of configuration will be seen from public thoroughfares. And that the solidity of the proposed, no, that's good. Therefore, I recommend that the proposed top floor window openings either be modified to more closely recall the pattern and the proportion historic punched masonry openings. That all of the proposed windows will be visible from a public thoroughfare will be modified to replicate the historic window configuration. Is that true? To look.
To look like.
To, with molding, I mean, what is it? But it's not real. Right?
It's not. I think it's called the muntens, yeah.
A mutton. To be modified to replicate the historic window configuration with the addition of a horizontal mutton to reflect, to mimic the double hung. And that the design, no. And that the presence of the solid door at the side of the stoop will be a discreet presence and in keeping with the varied conditions in this street scape.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Next is item number four, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 168018. 536 First Street, the Park Slope Historic District, block 1077, lot 13. A neo-renaissance style rowhouse built in 1909. The application is to enlarge masonry openings and modify a rear yard addition.
Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Emma Waterloo, Precision Staff. The item before you is 536 First Street in the Park Slope Historic District. Building is located in the block on the south side of the street between Prospect Park West and Eighth Avenue. For your applicants, please give the additions and conditions at the rear. The proposal is to add to the existing one-story addition at the rear yard and reconstruct the first floor of the L with a raising sunway and to install a deck as an addition to the L. The alterations to the additions may be invisible through a gap in the street while shown here. And that notice has been added as a worksheet to your handout. The applicant is here to further discuss their proposal and consider her husband's.
Thank you very much. Hi, good morning. My name is Gisela Baugh. I'm from rural New York. I'm a design architect of this project. And I'm Lucy Borick, who's the owner. Yeah, so we're located in Park Slope, Historic District, First Street, between Prospect Park West and Eighth Avenue. And this is a house that has been built around 1910, 1919. And you can see in the block that all the buildings have been built with that extension. So it's a three-story building, basement and one-story basement extension. That's the existing condition. You can see it from the rear. You can see the kitchen addition. This is the existing kitchen. This is the basement, basement windows. And there's a side yard here existing. And we wanted to rebuild the one-story addition here and add a tiny little part here, build out. This is just 34 inches that we can build out there. So you can see here the existing facade. This is the existing window. And the side, half similar, the side, Jason, half similar additions. What we're proposing is to open up the rear facade and glazing and to have on the second floor or the second floor and top of the addition. Again, this is the existing condition. This is the extension here and the existing side yard. There's a little wooden deck here. We're gonna open up that wall and add this part here and open the, did you see that? It's not still moving.
It's okay, we can look at ours.
So this is our proposal. So you see here, we're gonna add this little part towards the side yard. And, oops, sorry. And have the kitchen open up. So this is the existing section for the kitchen, as it is now. And you just have this area with the window, the threshold window that you saw. This is the proposed kitchen with the glazed facade and the deck. And this is the existing elevation, side elevation of that kitchen window on the side. And this is the proposed side elevation with a little extension that we are adding and the glazed side.
Mrs. Your question, what is the material of the fascia of the wall?
We want this to be wood. It might be that we have an issue with the fire. Whether it's too much square foot for the allow of the block material, then it would be metal, that we prefer it to be wood.
Are you intending it to be painted wood?
No, I would like it to be like, okay, wood and.
If it was painted, you could use hardy or cement or.
So these are some, okay, this is the, as you saw, the existing, just a little rendering of the facade with a.
And the windows, the windows are wood, metal?
The windows should be metal.
And they're gonna be white?
No, we would like them to be dark. That's what's taken us. They should be dark because we have dark bronze, kind of windows existing and.
And stairs will be down over the metal?
Yes, that should be steel. And it will be all, like, as possible. But this one, maybe, of that, is that? There's a, there's a, yeah, you can, that's an overlay of the rendering and the existing facade to this paperboard and there's nothing, that's nothing here, that's just a bay in here. You're asking about this, is it coming down that railing on the old deck or whatever? You see the old deck on the left? On the top deck part, that's the base.
What is that?
No, that's gonna be replaced. Because that's gonna be, the new deck is gonna be a little bit lower than existing. This is built up quite high. So this is gonna be, and this is also, we can't go that far out with the new deck because we don't have a 30 feet backyard there. And with the new deck, this is gonna step back six feet. It's only 24.
The prevailing material is for that new deck?
That will also, that will be also metal and possibly glass. So if you can't see it, it's behind me. It's all, yeah, yeah, it's one of the five feet, eleven inches back. Or, no, at least five feet, a little more than five feet back from this. This is a little, like, just a sketch of how this move is natural, sit in the side yard.
Okay, thank you. Yes, any questions?
Just a, and the current donut or inside block has no additions at all? It's, I mean, no contemporary additions to those Ls?
They have all different windows. They are opposite, they are rather big on the deck side. You saw that, that's also bigger than this one on the.
Can I ask you?
Number 552 has exactly what we're proposing, number 552. It does not have the additional 20 square feet that we're hoping to reclaim back from the side yard as per DOB, you know, as per our lot coverage. But it does have the glazing all the way around.
So this one.
It was the full, yeah.
Has its whole rock addition. It looks like it had been passed into commission in 2004 and subsequently it was drawn. So we didn't issue any permits for it, so it would be illegal. But that one has a little bit of a complicity. They try 552, that was referenced, it would be this one here, has permits to reconstruct the first floor of this rear extension, but the design seems to be somewhat different from the sound they may not be doing it as.
But otherwise, no other modifications to the?
There doesn't seem to be a problem with all of this.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Without stating my name, I'm Lucy Borick, I'm the homeowner. And I made a comment about number 552 and the glazing there.
Okay, any other questions? All right, there's one speaker, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. HDC found this addition modest in scale and overall unconcerning. One comment was regarding all the glass on the extension. We believe that maintaining a visually stronger proportion of the masonry envelope that used to be there would enhance the composition. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. Yes, Michael?
I think it's modest and appropriate. I think this is a remarkable, this is one of those blocks in Park Slope that is remarkably uniform. And the back end, you know, is, seems to be that way. And I think that this is a really good model for a very modest intervention. If I had one of those trampolades, I'd want all that glass too, I guess, to watch my kids break their necks. I think that the materials are a little bit, I think the only comment I would have of any substance is that the drawings seem a little bit undercooked. And I would ask them to work with staff to nail down finishes, visibility, materials, things like that.
Okay, agreed? Okay, Kim?
In the matter of 536 First Street, Park Slope Historic District, a neo-renaissance style rowhouse built in 1909. Application is to enlarge masonry openings and to modify a rear yard addition. I note that the building style, scale, materials, and details contribute to the architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that no significant architectural features will be eliminated or altered by the proposed work, that none of the work will be visible from the public thoroughfare, that the proposed extension will not. There's a new one. Didn't see that one. All right.
Oh, it's a new one.
There's a new one, okay. I will start. That no significant architectural features will be eliminated or altered by the proposed work, that the work will be minimally visible from the public thoroughfare, that the proposed extension will not extend to the rear lot line or substantially eliminate the presence of a rear yard, that the proposed extension will not rise to the full height of the building or will not be taller than the predominant height of the existing additions or enlargements on the block, that this modest extension, limited to the first floor and set back from the historic addition, will not disrupt the unity of the row, which features a consistent pattern of rear yard additions at the basement and first floors, that although the rear facade is minimally visible, the proposed masonry openings and metal and glass finistration at the rear yard addition and extension will maintain a division between the first, the floor levels helping to support residential scale, that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Applications approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 178622. This is 576 Bergen Street, located within the Prospect Heights Historic District. This is a neo-grec style rowhouse designed by Benjamin Estes and built in circa 1884. The application is to construct rooftop and rear yard additions, alter the areaway, and install a railing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Shabrami of the Precision Staff. The application before you is 576 Bergen Street, located in the Prospect Heights Historic District. The application has three components. The first is to construct a rooftop addition that will be set back approximately 11 foot 50 from the primary facade and four feet from the rear elevation and finished in a standing seam metal painted black and also extending with boots. The addition marked up here, it is a little, frankly, minimally visible over the primary elevation from the east towards Vanderbilt. It can be seen here from the trees. The second is to remove a shed from the basement at the rear and install a two-story rooftop addition, I mean, sorry, two-story rear yard addition. This addition will be clad in fiber cement panels with multi-light metal and glass and new and more shuttles. And then the last component is to modify the areaway at the front. They will be doing some excavation adjacent to the stoop and installing steps. Oh, no, thank you. This change to the grade is not visible from the sidewalk because it's sort of. And the architects will be looking at G U A plus I's here to discuss the proposal.
Good morning. The project in question is 576 Bergen Street. It's currently a two-family rowhouse and we're proposing to keep the two-family structure. We're proposing changes to the front facade and in a partial rooftop addition and a two-story rear extension. I'll start from the front and the lower ways to the back. This is 576 Bergen. Off the side is pretty similar along the street. We brought the building to repair the stucco facade, replace the windows. The windows, we did a survey of the existing. So the windows on the stucco has been repaired at the staff level. This is the front stoop, as it is. The sidewalk, there's a few steps that lead up to the front stoop. And then this is the second stoop. Right now, the floor level is about 14 inches lower to get into the basement. The step happens right in line with the gate. As the gate opens inwards, the two steps are right there. It's typical, but a little bit dangerous. So we're proposing to lower the front stoop and move the steps. And this darker area would be where we would fill it with the same stucco facade. 546 Bergen Street, just down the block from us, has done the same thing, where it did have about the same width and the same step upwards and filled in the affected area with the same matching stuff. We're also proposing to change the railing. This is the existing railing. The old Italian quality railing was from the. As it no longer meets the goal, we cannot fill it in with the same thing. This is a reference railing. We're in the same historic neighborhood that has been approved. And we're proposing to install the same. These are the changes to the front side. We're also proposing a rooftop addition. This is the overall map of the, um, the district. We focus on a few of the full or intact donuts. This is us in the green circle. The, the line above shows the existing configuration. The color coded is, um, so that everyone might understand what we're talking about. We are the gray area. Rooftop additions are in blue, rear yard additions are in three colors, single stories are in yellow, two stories in orange, and any, I see, three M C's are in red. We are proposing, as you can see, to add a partial four-floor and remove the one, partial one-story rear extension and make that a two-story extension. We've done studies and introductions with our previous presentations to the community and with our back and forth exchanges with the staff at L P C, determined that this was appropriate to set, uh, to put in a vigor. It doesn't eat into what the neighbors have or eat along into the existing building.
Just from this diagram, is it extending further than all those yellow one-story, um, additions?
I have, I don't know if you can read this. We are extending, it used to be 13 feet 4 inches, and the proposed is 16 feet. The neighbors from over here tell, uh, this one extends quite a bit.
And I'm talking about the other ones to the...
This one's 16 six, this one's about 10 feet, this one's 12, 13, 13, 14.
So, you're much, you're further out than them, because you're 16.
Well, this one's 16 six.
I see, okay, got it, got it, okay.
This is the existing section. Uh, this is the rear yard extension that we're tearing up. This is the partial rooftop in dark gray, and this is the rear yard extension. You did a whole bunch of side on side studies, which you will see, but directly across Bergen Street at sidewalk level, um, the rear rooftop addition is not visible at all. As for the materials, we are proposing a natural cement-colored, lightweight cement panel, uh, standing seam metal roof. The sandstone will be restored, and we're keeping the existing doors and the window frames are relatively colored the same as the corners which are just in front. This is a mock-up that we did, um, for the rooftop addition. Initially, we had, this was the, the size of the, of the rooftop addition that we had initially wanted. Over the course of our back and forth and walking with staff, we've determined that this bulk was slightly visible as we walked down Bergen Street. Uh, and so we did a series of studies, which I'll go through with you. We walked and started taping what was visible as we walked along Bergen Street. The line, the yellow line represents what is not visible at all, uh, as we walk towards Vanderbilt, because Bergen Street slopes upwards, actually, the further you go, the more visible it becomes. Unfortunately, the yellow line is not to cope. The blue, the teal color, is the minimally cope-allowed height. Uh, and so we've used that as the basis of our presentation. So, all the drawings you see here is modified to the blue line, uh, just like this was photoshopped to show that the blue line is visible from the rear yard. These are the, the drawings showing where we walked along Bergen Street. At the corner of Carlton and Bergen, this is, only the flues are visible from the rooftop. This is, uh, across the street at about eighty-eight yards away. Again, only the flues are visible. As you step further away at 147 yards, there's a tree in the place, but through a telephoto lens, this part is visible.
That's the ridge at the blue line?
The ridge at the blue line, that's correct. Um, we did also a series of studies with Landmark where we tried to study what happens if we have a flat roof, uh, because cope requires that a bulkhead, uh, is used to access the flat roof. The bulkhead becomes more visible, in our view, than if we did a pitch roof, uh, which is pitched at 27 degrees. And that, in that case, only any flues are ever visible. Same, same situation when you're directly across Bergen Street, and when you step away and you're at a higher height, this is obviously more visible than this. So, it is our belief that a soap roof would be less intrusive. The rear yard facade, um, this is a primary rear yard facade, and we're proposing removing this shed, creating a two-story extension, but in the same natural grade, uh, cement stucco pan. Some of the coordinates, this is the existing roof pan, and this shows the footprint of the, of the existing and what we're proposing, and...
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we can take testimony. There are a few speakers. Ms. Joanie Granville? Each person will be given three minutes.
Good morning. At the April fourteenth Community Board Eight General Meeting, members voted on multiple facets of the application for certificate appropriateness for five seven six Bergen Street. The board, in its vetting process, broke the application into three more manageable pieces. First, the board supported the vote of 32 in favor, one opposed with one abstention, to support regrading the front areaway, areaway to a gradual decline rather than a step down. Second, the board voted 23 in favor, three opposed with seven abstentions, to support the addition of a partial rooftop four-floor with the condition that the windows align with the windows on the second and third floors. Please note that the block association and neighbors all would like the record to reflect the fact that they do not support the partial four-floor addition. Finally, the board voted on the most controversial part of the plan that calls for the addition of a four-story, 26-foot, 6-inch-long rear extension, including renovating existing brownstone with all-new fixtures, finishes, appliances, renovating the interior layout, keeping two-family apartment as current owner-occupied triplex with a rental on the ground floor, restoring the sandstone facade and replacing the existing windows to match original historical windows. There was a discussion of a reduction of the re-extension to 16 feet and two stories. However, the board voted not to support this portion of the plan, 30 in favor, two opposed with one abstention, because of the sheer bulk of the extension for the block and the desire to preserve the front donut hall. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Leapardo.
Hi, thank you. My name is Laura Leapardo, and I live at 157 St. Marks Avenue. I oppose the plan. I oppose it because I truly and deeply believe that the essence and feel of Brownstone Brooklyn could permanently be destroyed. Not, of course, with this one addition, but with the Pandora's Box and open setting a precedent that can't be turned back. As you know, the St. Marks Avenue and Bergen Street backyards abut each other. My yard is one over from the proposed expansion. I've lived on St. Marks for 22 years. I moved from Chicago to New York and never, ever for a moment wanted to live in Manhattan. Too busy, too loud, too in-your-face. That's not what Brownstone Brooklyn was about. It was quiet, peaceful residential neighborhoods, and backyards are intrinsic to the essence of what defines Brownstone Brooklyn. They have offered a sanctuary from the city itself and are as important as the streetscapes themselves. We now see that our backyards are threatened by the introduction of supersized additions that would never be allowed on the street side. It is our backyard sanctuaries that are at stake with each new supersized addition. These looming structures will forever change the character of our backyards and thereby change the very essence of what makes up the particular personality and character of Brownstone Brooklyn itself. We utilize our sanctuaries in the back for peace and tranquility from the intensity of the streets. All those streets are, and those streets are no longer quiet and peaceful. We are inundated with the constant and constant noise pollution from all the encompassing construction going on around us. This summer of loan, we've endured national grid jackhammering sidewalks to lay new piping. Carlton Street was tore up and repaved. On my own block, Verizon tore up our sidewalks to lay new cables. Three houses directly across the street from mine have been in the process of a gut renovation since last December. Need I explain the noise associated with dumpsters coming and going, idling delivery trucks bringing materials along, the banging and sawing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And walking on Vanderbilt Avenue, one has to often pause your converta, conversation until the various loud sirens, construction, and delivery vehicles have passed. Noise has become the new normal on streets outside our beautiful brownstone facades. As I stated previously, our backyards are our sanctuaries, our places for peace and quiet and to get away from that noise pollution. The backyards are, in fact, as intrinsic to our neighborhoods as the human scale of the streetscapes themselves. Therefore, our sanctuaries are not a place to have supersized additions. Additions such as the proposed loom over our personal space in our own private backyards in a way that would never be allowed on the street side. If you allow this oversized expansion, it sets a precedent for others to do the same. I believe the consequence will be that the essence, the character, the feel, the charm, and the personality of Brownstone Brooklyn will start to permanently and slowly be destroyed, and there is no turning back.
Thank you. Audrey Delgado. The next speaker is Audrey Delgado.
Good morning and thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm a homeowner, I am a homeowner on St. Marks Avenue in Prospect Heights since 2001. Prior to being designated landmark, we watched and cringed as new owners annexed additions to their homes without taking into account the historic character of our Brownstone community, and after doing so, either selling or renting their supersized homes that would maximize their investments. As I walk a five-block area from Flatbush to Washington Avenue, there are eight major construction sites. If I walk the footprints of Prospect Heights, I can count over 25 construction sites. This is happening today. When Prospect Heights received a landmark designation, many homeowners and residents breathed a sigh of relief that L P C was on the side of protecting our historic neighborhoods as we encountered the changing footprints of Prospect Heights with the construction of the Barclay Arena. L P C put forth great effort to expedite our designation in order to protect the historic character as many showed up with deep pockets and no vision. Many of us have taken refuge in our backyards. Simple things such as breezeways and open-air vistas are now threatened. For the new residents coming into our neighborhood, I wonder if they are aware how their plans impact our neighbors. They're fighting to get what they want only to rob neighbors of their comforts and the character of a community. Your decision will set precedence for those that follow. I hope L P C is still committed to protecting historical homes and neighborhoods that are under constant pressure to be supersized. A purchase, in, a purchaser's intention can change and be covert. What should be steadfast is protecting historical neighborhoods. By 2017, Prospect Heights will see an increase of new residents in the thousands. For many of us, our backyards are our sanctuaries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerry Rizvus? I'm sorry, Jerry Rizvus? Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. Since this row is comprised of only two-story homes, any addition is going to impact the rear yards of these neighbors. To that end, short of making it smaller, we ask that the visual impact of this extension be reduced by selecting a sympathetic brick material as a nuanced reflection of the building's interior layout within the fenestration. The cement-fiber clashes in color and composition, especially when set within large expanses of glass. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brenda Tijima?
Thank you, everyone, for taking our concerns so seriously. I represent the block, I'm the, uh, block president of Bergen Street Prospect Heights, and we've met repeatedly as a block. We've gone to the Ulrich meeting and the community board meetings, and we have shown great concern through repeated lettering, letter-writing campaigns. It's a unanimous feeling in our block that, um, the, uh, incursion that will take place with this development in the rear yard would be absolutely detrimental to our, um, our lifestyle, our well-being. Future considerations of global warming, I know you don't take this seriously, but it would foreclose all possibility to have, uh, solar paneling, something we're thinking about as a block. Um, it would deeply jeopardize the synchronous historical nature of our block. Uh, we watched with great dismay when 570, uh, was built, and we were so thankful when we got landmark designation to be able to preserve the historic fabric of our block. Many of the residents on my block have lived there for 20, 30, 40 years. I myself have lived there for 20 years, and it's been peaceful. We haven't had major constructions. I want to contextualize the fact that we live next to one of the, America's biggest, um, growing density of population, and so we are so, so, um, you know, adamant about preserving the wildlife, the open air. We don't want mold, we don't want Herculean, uh, structures that take away our humanity. We want to keep everything to scale. We really don't, I also want to contextualize, the architect was giving misinformation. The pre-existing rear yard extensions are all sheds, so they don't have a foundation, and they have slope roofs, so they're much less impactful. Um, and, uh, we ask that you keep this in mind. We're also against the, um, the roof extension for the various reasons that I mentioned, and it's just going to be out of synchronicity with our block, and you can see it from all angles, just not if you stand in front of the building, but all angles because Brooklyn, um, Bergen Street is on a hill. Thank you very much. We also have additional follow-up, um, imagery handouts that we would like to submit. Thank you.
Thank you. The next pers, the speaker is Perlene Granville? Glanville? Sorry.
Good morning, everyone. I'm living at five seven eight Bergen Street, just a joint to that. And, um, I'm a senior. I've lived there since 1972, and I thought it was a block association landmark stuff. And I was very happy there, but now, because we stayed in our backyard, we use our backyard for everything we do, and now it's, everything is going to be messed up, which is not fair to us that is living there for so long. So, um, we are asking if this project could be, you know, canceled because we are going to, I'm asthmatic also with all that dust coming around. I can't take it, so, please.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Steadman.
Hi, uh, my name is Daniel Steadman. At first, I want to say I'm really pleased to have Pardo family come to our neighborhood. Um, our kids are just about the same age. Excited to have them as neighbors and friends for what I hope is a long time. Also, um, the wife of the family got me my first lease for my company, and we're still operating now, like, 14 years later. Um, and I wanted to say that I believe that the multi-story rear yard addition does threaten to impact the preservation and history of our historic block. My child and I are playing in the backyard often, and we see our neighbors two or three houses down, and we wave, and sometimes there's an impromptu backyard hang- houses down, and we wave, and sometimes there's an impromptu backyard hangout, and which I, and this, I think, is threatened by a large, multi-story rear yard addition. Backyard and rear facades of our buildings are an important part of the preservation of our blocks and our homes. I think, I also feel like it could set a precedent on the block, which would mean that certain homes would have large rear yard extensions on both sides of them, which would change the historical character of their homes. There are currently no multi-story rear yard additions that have been built or approved since the block was landmarked. So I would just ask the commission to keep the history and character of our block alive by limiting rear yard extensions to a single story. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gwendolyn Johnson.
My name is Gwendolyn Johnson. I live across the street from said structure. I've lived in this neighborhood since 1965, so I think I'm the oldest one living in this whole area. My whole concern is, when you sent your people out to investigate the area for landmarking, I approached these people and asked them, who are they and why are they here? And why are you documenting such things on the block, taking pictures and making notes? So I was told that we will be going landmark. I said, oh, that's fine. That's wonderful. So what does that entail? So they told me, you cannot change the front facade of the building or build anything above. So I point to the building, as you see there. I said, will we have anything like this? And they say, no, it's not conducive to the area. We're trying to preserve this. So, in other words, if this project goes through for extending up or going back, what is landmarked for? That's my problem. Nothing against the people, but you're real estate people. You can get any home you want because you get first pick to suit your family. There's other buildings in the neighborhood that were larger that can fit their family. So why come in here, change the whole thing? We're a peaceful neighborhood, been very quiet, neighbor knows neighbor, parties to party. We'd, half the time, we didn't have to lock our doors back in the day. But now you have to lock up everything. We're surrounded by buildings all around us. We're going to be boxed in. And I don't think it's right because we may be back here again because the building next to me is reconstructed, but they're not doing anything on the outside. There's a lot next to me, which I figure eventually they're going to build there, which there was never been a building of any kind there. And behind us on Dean Street, we've got skyscrapers going up, so we're fully boxed in. And if this goes through, I don't know what's going to happen because then everybody is going to do what they want, so we have no need for you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dana O'Towsley.
Dana O'Towsley from the Prospect Heights Neighborhood Development Council. Good morning. So this is the first application for what's an unusual block within the Prospect Heights Historic District. So although the north, I don't know if you saw that, the northeastern quadrant of the block has a few industrial buildings, but most of the row houses on that block of Bergen Street and across the donut on St. Marks are these very petite three-story row houses, about 17 feet wide. So, I mean, there is our outlier over there, but most of them are very small, and as other speakers have pointed out, that the extensions are really just sheds with one-story slope sides. And the only other two-story extension on the block is not quite 12 feet deep. So this is the first application for this block under landmarks. It's the first rear yard addition. It should be something special. It should set the tone, and it really doesn't at this point. It's really too big for the context of this little house. And as Kelly Carroll has pointed out, the finishes, the cement panels, really just, they're just unattractive. They lack some of the kind of more refined details that we've seen in other rear yard extensions in Prospect Heights. It doesn't have a cornice. Also, I want to point out that the windows, we really didn't, I feel like the presentation maybe didn't point this out very clearly, but the fenestration on the rooftop addition is quite odd. It doesn't align with the fenestration below, and I ask that the commission take a look at that as well. So the smaller extension, the one other two-story extension of 12 feet deep, is something we'd like to see. I think that would set a good precedent for this very charming block. Thank you.
The next speaker is Margaret Clay.
I'm Margaret Clay. We welcome the Pardo family to our landmark community. I'm speaking for myself and my husband, Sylva Dobry. Both of us are especially pleased that their twin sons who are already attending PS9, our local school, continue their sincere commitment to the neighborhood, and we'll begin to know them better as neighbors and future friends. However, the proposed changes to what is now an identical house next door to our home drastically impact a row of houses structurally unguarded for over 130 years. Even though the lowering of the downstairs entry by 15 inches to eliminate the ceiling does not seem like a notable change, it flattens the appearance of the upstairs entrance. Structure designed for the top of the house from your view from the street and its pitch roof is not incompatible with traditional brownstone designs. If approved, the shadow cast will probably exclude us and our neighbors at 578 Bergen Street from future use of solar panels on our own Flatbush. A two-story rear extension broke the odds of forcing their small house and the home surrounding it. Such a mammoth structure destroys the donut and the donut community and the existing gardens, as well as trapping us and our neighbors at 572 Bergen Street in deep shade. Most of the existing extensions are small, not exceeding one story, and do not intrude on their neighbors. The two disturbing exceptions were approved prior to the area being landmarked. We bought our house in 1977 from the descendants of the original owners. We made some repairs and internal changes to accommodate our contemporary lifestyle. However, we did nothing to alter that its external appearance imposed on our neighbors. Through the years, many people in the neighborhood did the same. We are convinced that the new owners of 576 Bergen Street can make the changes they need to suit their needs by utilizing all the space within their building that hasn't been done in the past. We are proud and honored to be living in a landmark area. It validates what we have known for 40 years. Our home is special and needs to be preserved for us and coming generations to appreciate and enjoy. Allowing unnecessary concessions to landmark properties makes what we are trying to conserve vulnerable to more inappropriate alteration proposals in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yvonne Johnson. Yvonne is here? Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yvonne Johnson. My mother owns that house at 578 Bergen Street. The house that they are trying to, in my opinion, destroy. We are landmark. We should be uniform. Okay? Putting this thing on top is taking away everybody's privacy. All the rodents, the rats, they just run wild in the neighborhood. If it is a landmark, why can't it remain a landmark?
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Silvio Dobri.
Basically, I want to, my name is Silvio Dobri. Basically, I would like to say that we have three problems. I think the issue that I can see is supersizing. They are supersizing a small brownstone into something much larger. There's two stories that is going to be extended, another story on top, plus changing the character of the front, that the unity of the whole row is going to be destroyed, more than it was destroyed by the existence of that pre-landmark change. So eventually, I don't see our neighborhood will change. It's interesting to note, notice that our donut is 2.2 acres, and it's kind of substantial for New York City and even for Brooklyn, and we would like to keep it that way. Extending two stories and another story on top is going to limit the donut, and it's already limited by the pre-landmark designation that the construction that was there that became an atrocity and ruins the view from one yard to the yard, and it ruins the unity. I imagine, I'm living on 572, that's 570. We ourselves, my wife and me and my family and the people next door, are going to be boxed in on one side for the pre-landmark extension that imposed our space quite a bit, and now we are going to have the same on 576. And, okay, if this is going to be the trend, and landmark will allow it, that's going to be the trend, but I hope that's not going to be the case. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? Right, we received about eight letters as well in opposition. Several of those who've written in actually spoke today as well. Are there any questions for the applicants? All right. I just have one question, which is about the rooftop addition. So you said that, that right now it's to code. You had some concerns about lowering it because it wouldn't be to code. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. But the slope, is that also, is that the minimum slope that you have to have in order to not have a bulkhead?
Yes. FDNY regulations that if I have a flat roof or anything below a 25-degree pitch, it's considered a flat roof, and I need a both exterior and interior stairs to access, which is why you see the bulkhead. So by having a pitch roof, we don't have to build a bulkhead, which reduces the visibility.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions?
Could you clarify again why that yellow line? Why can't you do bill on the yellow line?
The minimum ceiling clearance for any habitable space is eight feet. So if we were to make a single-story flat roof, it would be eight feet across. In the pitch roof, the minimum is seven feet at the lowest point, and at that point, it needs to slope up so that it's at least eight feet, two thirds of the slope.
So currently, at that yellow line where it's drawn, what height? Six feet. I see.
And the blue line is seven.
If no other questions, we can close the hearing. All right. Comments?
I'd like to see the rooftop addition. Actually, I'd like to not see the rooftop addition. I think the applicant needs to work to reduce the size of that so it's not visible. I mean, they showed a nice photograph with trees obscuring the thing, but in the wintertime, it's going to be highly visible. I'd like to see it disappear.
Well, they could do that. If they can't lower the height, that it would mean that they'd have to, they'd have to move it back or set it back further. So we can ask them to work with staff to eliminate the visibility.
5,713, we're proposing with the 752 rooftop addition to be 8,038 with a net of 2,325.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony. Each person will be given three minutes.
Hi, I'm Stephen Williams. I live across the street at 331 West 20th, and my family's owned the building since 1989. I do object to the rooftop addition as it is very visible from the street. The architect has tried to obfuscate that, but it's wide open visible. It's not visible from directly in front of the building, as he says. It is completely visible from my view, from the top floor of my building, but, you know, progress is progress. I'm not here to complain about that. I'm here to complain about the effect on the neighborhood. A big problem I have with this project is the way it has been pushed through the community with no notice. I found out about it a week ago when they were building the structure on the roof to show the landmarks. And I went across the street, spoke to the foreman of the construction crew, and he said, we did everything by the law, and you should have looked at the notice on the front door. So I was expected to go across and look at the front door, and I was never told anything. Even though my neighbor is, next-door neighbor is involved in the marketing of this project, I wasn't told anything about this until a week ago when the entire neighborhood figured it out. So I haven't seen the plans. This is the first time I've seen any of this material. We got a letter from the architect, kind of disingenuous letter. I also questioned the facade, which I understand is from an 1890 photograph of the building or something like that, and clearly, the building is much older than that. And so this filigree and shutters and stuff doesn't seem to be, to me, to be in character with the block or the rest, you know, the way the building was. So I could be wrong about that. I'm not a historian. But I really think this project will set a really bad precedent to the row of beautiful buildings next to it, which have no additions. It's an incredibly lovely block. The church is beautiful. The theater is beautiful, and this will really have a huge impact on the view of really one of the best blocks in Chelsea. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joanna Peck.
I'm an attorney with Adam Lightman Bailey, PC. Good morning. I represent the owner directly adjacent to 334 West 20th Street at 332. His name is Nicholas Griffin. And I want to start off by saying that there's a lot of concerns that you're going to hear today from various neighbors who, in fact, we notified of what was going on because it didn't appear that anybody had noticed on the street concerning the plans. And I distributed a binder, which I'd like to walk you through a few highlights of since I'm limited on time. The binder has four tabs in it for your review. The first is a report from our architect, my client engaged, Erwin Imbelinski, and I have him here today, Donald Erwin. The second tab is a mockup of what the true representation of the structure on the roof is. And I'd like you to turn to that because I think it's very telling about what's being presented here relative to what we're actually seeing on the street, and you'll hear this from other neighbors. If you flip to the second tab, you'll see the second page in that depicts the way the owner of 334 has depicted the structure on the roof. If you turn the page, you'll see what the actual structure is going to look like. This depicts a bulkhead, which is not currently reflected, as well as a chimney, which is also not currently reflected on the existing mockup on the street. The next page under photographs is a picture that I took late last week of the structure on the roof. This picture was taken directly across the street, and as you can see, it is quite visible from the street, contrary to what 334 has represented. In the pictures that the architect just went through, if you go to, in his plans, A26, this is a visual that he has described as saying that there's no visibility from the street. That actually is not the case, as you'll see in this binder. The last tab is neighbors' letters objecting to the construction, which we had three or four days to gather, given the very short notice on this. I'd like to request that the committee leave the record open on this. As the plans are, have just become available, you've already heard from one neighbor that sufficient notice wasn't given out. We need an opportunity to fully evaluate this, as other neighbors do, and therefore, I respectfully request that the committee leave the record open on this matter.
The next speaker is Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. Just a week after Chelsea's oldest house was allowed to be destroyed and its federal envelope zipped open, here is a speculative proposal to obliterate its Greek Revival counterpart. The LPC designation report described this building as, quote, "an excellent example of the first houses built in Chelsea. The 20-foot width shows to advantage the impressive character of the Greek Revival style," end quote. Twenty-five feet unfortunately was evidently not enough, as there is so much bulk proposed for this house, we wonder why there wasn't an addition proposed for the front as well. In fact, if commissioners look carefully, the cornice will be raised to accommodate the bulk. Ruining the proportions of the facade to accommodate bulk is the essence of inappropriate. Simply put, accretions to this 1836 property should work for the house, the house shouldn't work for the additions. Regarding the rest of the home, the historic roofline will be decimated and so will any historic fabric, including rear window openings and four stories of 180-year-old brick on the rear facade. The inherent value of this home is derived from its location, its historic attributes, and its handsome proportions. The scheme just buys the address, maximizes the square footage, and puts a Greek Revival style sign on the front. If LPC had to rewrite designation reports now for these buildings that are irreversibly altered with preserved facades, would they still be included as excellent examples of buildings of their respective eras? Would we be able to learn from these buildings about how they were put together, with their distinct rooflines, unusual brick bonds, and methods of construction? Or will we have to learn these things from a book? The best way to understand the history of our city is to physically encounter it. This proposal destroys that history and robs New York of something precious and irreparable. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. So here we are in the heart of Chelsea, beside St. Peter's Church, consecrated in 1838 on land given by Clement Clark Moore, his church, where he served as warden and organist. The earliest New York parish church to be built in the English Gothic style, intended to harmonize with the nearby seminary. While it was under construction in 1836, a Greek Revival townhouse was built next door, that's this house. It's described in the designation report as an excellent example of the earliest houses in Chelsea. This house is remarkably intact. The space between it and St. Peter's was originally the churchyard, but in 1871, St. Peter's Hall was built there. Now it's a theater. It's a low Victorian Gothic building. The roofline, the side roofline of this townhouse stands just above, framing the break in the street wall and the view of the St. Peter's complex. It is totally visible from the west. The photographs of the mock-up are in no way adequate. I believe you have been given some photographs, but I went over there also having heard rumors about the nature of the presentation, so I'd like to submit my photograph. This addition is absolutely huge. Its appearance is a startling disruption of a century-old vista, one of the most picturesque in the Chelsea district. Unfortunately, this is a location where any visible rooftop addition would be extremely destructive. So perhaps the project should be rethought, since this huge structure is not utilitarian, but consists of a 30-foot-long self-described lounge with two terraces reached by an elevator and complete with plumbing. This is a development formula we have seen before all too often. The house, 25 feet wide, is of ample size and its envelope is pristine. How long will it be before every Greek Revival townhouse in Chelsea has lost its original identity and Clement Clark Moore's vision for the estate can no longer be discerned?
The next speaker is the Reverend Stephen Harding.
Good afternoon. I'm the Reverend Stephen Harding. I'm the pastor of St. Peter's Episcopal Church. And I just want to correct the record that we are not a former church complex, we are a current church complex. And I rise to speak against the proposed additions to our neighbor's house. St. Peter's, as you've just heard, is one of the few remaining footprints of Clement Clark Moore's estate, Chelsea, from which the neighborhood gets its name. Our complex encompasses 336 through 346 West Twentieth Street. And we are in the middle of restoring our historic 1837 roof. Thank you for your support of our efforts to preserve our heritage and our past. And I have four concerns. One is the proposed addition to the roof, which to me is the equivalent of the Green Monster Wall at Fenway Park in Boston. The structure that the contractors have put on the roof of 334 is clearly seen from in front of the church on the south side of the street. And I can see it from the time when I'm equidistant at the tower until I get to the Atlantic Theater Company, which leases that building from St. Peter's. I also want to express my concern with the basement, the excavation. I am concerned about the foundations of the Theater Company building, which was our parish hall, collapsing as a result of excavation. I've been to enough collapses due to trench digging that I'm concerned about this. I'm concerned about the extension in the backyard because the proposed extension, according to the architect's plan, would extend the length, two-thirds of our building on the east side. We have a lease with the Theater Company until 2039, and if we wanted to un-brick our windows, what would we see? We'd see a brick wall. Also, I'm concerned about how do we maintain the east wall of our structure? And the, my final point is that no one from the architect, contractor, owner, anybody involved in this project has contacted me or anyone at St. Peter's to tell us what they're going to do. Not good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carol Ott.
Hi, I'm Carol Ott and I reside at 324 West Twentieth Street. I currently serve as the block president of the 300 West Twentieth Street block and have been a Twentieth Street resident since 1998. I'm attending this meeting to voice my opposition to the proposed construction plans at 334. The scale of homes on this landmark block is what gives its character and what all my neighbors have agreed to when they bought homes on Twentieth Street. In fact, our neighborhood has worked tirelessly to make sure that new development remains consistent with the character of Chelsea, a task that never seems to end. We only learned about 334's plans a few days ago, and given the magnitude of this proposal, I find it very disturbing that neighbors were left in the dark until very late in the game. What the owner of 334 is requesting permission to do would, in my opinion, create a new home, a mini-mansion, that is out of scale with the neighbors, not only in its height, but in its mass and depth. Approving these plans as submitted would severely affect the look and feel of our block from rooftop to courtyard and would signal to all that changes of this magnitude are allowable if only the owner can afford it. I am particularly concerned about the destruction of the courtyard and the fact that this structure will make this shared space smaller. If 334 can do this, so can any of the structures on our block. There are at least 25 houses who will be immediately affected by this large addition, plus the months and months of construction destruction, dust, and noise. I hope this commission will protect the character of our block and courtyard and disapprove these plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Board Four didn't take a position right now, but they recommend leaving the record open.
Leaving the what?
Record open. All right. Do you want to respond to any of the comments?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
In regards to the mock-up, I believe that the architect who had provided the report was basing it on an earlier set that was a DOP general set. We subsequently met with the staff members. We reduced the bulk of the addition. Originally, my clients wanted a full height to the fourth floor, we brought it down to the third floor. In addition, the, it's incorrect about the parapet. We are reconstructing the facade absolutely historically. There isn't an addition or more attributes, except for the fact that we are reconstructing the Juliet balconies that are evident in this photograph, which was taken perhaps 30 to 50 years after the construction, but it's the earliest evidence of the, indeed, they are correct that you see it as I tried to illustrate. However, when we took the photographs, there's a lot of trees that you can see it from the west side, but directly across the street, it's not evident. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicants? I'm sorry, we're not, did you want to speak?
Yes.
I mean, do you want, did you speak into the rec?
I don't know, I was waiting to speak. It's how the opportunity to do that.
Okay, all right, because maybe you didn't give your slip and you can speak. Come forward. We're given three minutes.
My name is Marnie Joyce. I'm the operations manager for the Atlantic Theater Company and the building directly adjacent at 336 West Twentieth Street. This is a not-for-profit off-broadway theater company and we rent St. Peter's Hall from the church. We've been there for decades and we'll be there for decades more. We have an eight-show season that includes two shows that are specifically targeted for families and children 12 and under. And on Mondays through Fridays, all through the spring and the fall, we have 10:00 AM matinees for public schoolchildren to attend. On Tuesdays at 2:00 PM, we have a matinee program for our subscribers. I'm concerned about the construction process and how that will interfere with our business and our ability to provide the arts for schoolchildren. I appear to be the only person on the block who was contacted in advance of this. I was asked to provide access to our basement, to show our architectural drawings, to allow people from the construction company to come in and take photographs. I've been asked to work with their surveyor. Though I made it very clear that we are tenants and I requested that they contact the church and I provided contact information for the church, I understand that that hasn't happened. We have been told that they will need to install vibration monitors to protect the structural integrity of our building. So I have serious concerns about this process, how it will, how the construction process will impact our business and how it will affect the building long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? Commissioners, have any more questions for the applicant?
Yes, can I just ask the applicant about the rear facade? How much of that rear facade is of the, the original construction?
It's a fully new rear facade. That's the front facade and the rear facade.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. If you go through the booklet and you see some of the views and particularly from the, from the church, I think that the rooftop addition is just overwhelming. And it seems that in this particular instance, given the existing building itself and its size, as well as its block and its adjacent neighbors, it seems, at least in my opinion, I think that we should ask them to remove the, the top floor completely. And I also think that just in the lower floors, I, I think in this instance, again, because this is a smaller building and they're providing a significant enlargement, and I've looked through the plans and even though that's not really what determines appropriateness, but I'm looking at them and it seems to me that the addition on the, I guess it would be the third floor, so it's third floor basement, I think it'd be better if they take it back to its existing wall and line up with the adjacent building. And I think that will really bring down the amount of enlargement. I think the concerns that we've heard about overwhelming this building and its age and it's, you know, it's delicate and I think we want to ensure that that, the existing fabric doesn't crumble and fall apart with a significant enlargement. So that's what I would recommend, the big changes. Yes. And the last thing I want to just say is that they work with staff on the, any sort of restorative elements and the cornice and its features to ensure that they reflect what is there historically. Yes, Fred?
I also think that the rear elevation is inappropriate, is wrong, and needs to be rethought. It looks like a school or something, I don't know what it looks like, but. Page A012.
Okay.
So I would think that it should come back to us, not, not just work with staff. I think this is, I, I, you know, for all the pages here in the application, there's so much that's not being told and it was, it's really frustrating and irritating, I have to admit. To not see the pictures that were supplied by others was wrong. And to not understand the, the elevation that is on the backside of, of the hall is wrong, which is an elevation of, of this property, I mean, against the property to the west. So I think there's just a lot that we didn't get even to see. But what we did see was overwhelming, this 1836 house, and completely inappropriate in my, my judgment.
The only thing I'd say, I mean, we, we can ask them to come and bring it back, but I think, you know, we've allowed a lot of flexibility in the rear yards. The lower floors are not visible from any public thoroughfare. It seems that the third floor, which if they set back to the line and they go back to the historic openings, I think that would ensure that it's legible, but, you know, them coming back, maybe we do need to, for them to come back if they put back sort of the historic window.
I want to see the back elevation. This is, you're an important house.
Okay, all right. In that case, we will ask them to come back. So we're not going to take any action today. And since we're not taking any action, we can leave the record open. If anybody wants to add in any additional testimony and writing, they can do that till the next public meeting.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough Manhattan DACA number 190182. This is 299 Riverside Drive, AKA 295-299 Riverside Drive and 322 to 332 West 102nd Street, located within the Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Two. This is a Renaissance Revival-style apartment building designed by Evan T. McDonald and built in 1910/11. The application is to replace a window.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Service, Preservation Staff. 299 Riverside Drive is located at the southeast corner of West 100 and 2nd Street and Riverside Drive. This application is to replace a single existing tilt-and-turn window with a new tilt-and-turn window with a three-window louver. window with a through-window louver. The original window configuration throughout the building was an eight-over-eight sash, and while most of the windows have been replaced by one-over-one and single-light configurations prior to designation, our rules for a staff-level approval would require that the window be returned to its original configuration. The applicant, Michael Haverland, is here to present this proposal.
Good afternoon. This proposal's pretty straightforward. Essentially, we just have a single-pane tilt-and-turn window in this part of the apartment on the 11th floor, and what we'd like to do is simply, and just so you know, there are a lot of single-pane windows already in both facades of the building, is replace that with tilt-and-turn window, exact same color and configuration as the existing and adjacent, with specifications for a louver for through-window, a condition that we worked out at staff level. So here we indicate and call out the windows that are exception to even the prominent pattern of the double-hung windows. Here we show the existing window condition and the proposed. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? I have no questions for now. Sean Korsandi?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Korsandi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee has reviewed evidence of through-window condenser units that allow original sash windows to remain as-is in C2 with a mere addition of security pins and insulation. Although the applicant points out other through-window air conditioner units at this address, a similar diagram could be generated for the single-light instances across the building. This apartment is, in fact, the only unit on the north elevation not to have double-hung style windows. Even more to the point, there appear to be just two other masonry openings on this elevation without lyre windows, both belonging to this apartment. This quantity is from an entire facade of 147 windows, less than 3%. There's no reason to exasperate existing mistakes. A replacement of a tilt-turn window such as is proposed here is the perfect instance to do it properly. This could easily be the impetus for replacing it through a double-hung window, which would be more in keeping with the majority of the facade. The remaining inconsistent windows, overall less than 9% of the visible facades, could hopefully follow soon. Some might think this seems petty. It's not. We regularly see ornamental bowerleaf stonework restored, cornices replaced, and stoops recreated. Why should we not expect a return to consistent fenestration? Landmark West would support this application if engaged through a double-hung sash, and our committee would like to reiterate our call for window master plans in large apartment buildings. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's Landmark West. All right, Community Board Seven recommends approval of this application. Are there any other speakers on this item? No other speakers. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. Right, comments?
On this facade, on the north facade, this apartment is the only one that has this single-pane window, anyway. On the other facade, they have more, but that's not the facade he's working on, so I don't see why it can't be double-hung, or even if he needs a tilt-and-turn, at least have the mutton there so it looks like it's double-hung, because everything else is double-hung there.
Other comments? So they'll have the louver and then they'll put the mutton?
Yeah.
I think the louver's okay. I think they can work with staff on, you know, having the lower light to be a louver.
Sorry, can you say that again?
I'm sorry. They're asking for a louver as well, so I think that if you're going to do a double-hung, you could just use the lower light as a louver. If we're going to ask them to do a double-hung, then the lower panel of the two in one of the windows could be a louver.
Right. But I think the recommendation is to be tilt-and-turn, but it should have --
Faux double-hung.
Faux double-hung. Okay, they could work with staff, too, find the right proportions. Everybody's okay? I'm sorry? Yeah, Matt, what's it?
Can you respond?
All right, just, we'll reopen, yes. Respond?
Only because, you know, once you add a -- pardon me. Once you add another mullion here, first of all, not only is that mullion not visible from the street, because this is the 11th floor, and a leak leak, that would never be seen. All it does is create a weird, fertile space between the low and the middle. And in fact, we've been working, I've been advocating the building to a master plan for double-hung windows in the future, so if anyone else has a single-pane window wants a louver, or if anyone has an existing double-hung, we would be able to streamline the process for everyone. But this case is unique because it's an existing single-pane tilt-and-turn, and all we're asking to do is add the louver, and thankfully, this building's never allowed through-wall penetrations, so the masonry has been preserved, and the board is committed to allowing through-window windows and not through-wall, I guess, in this case.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody who's okay with this as-is? I'm okay with it as-is. Anybody else? Okay, who? You're also okay? Okay. All right. What?
In the matter of 299 Riverside Drive, AKA 295-299 Riverside Drive, and 322 and 332 West 102nd Street Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two, the application is to replace a window, noting that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two. Also noting that the building located on the corner of West 102nd Street and Riverside Drive has two primary facades. I recommend approval finding that the proposed window at the west 102nd Street elevation will replace an existing single-pane window and will match other single-pane windows found elsewhere on the building on the Riverside Drive elevation, that the proposal calls for removal of vertical metal panel and would therefore restore the window opening to its historic width, that the proposed through-window louver will be compatible with other through-window HVAC louvers found elsewhere on the building at both primary facades, that the 11th floor location will allow the window to be less perceptible from public thoroughfare. Oh, there was some of that. That the window and louver will not replace a special window, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Riverside West End Historic District Extension Two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough Manhattan DACA number 179329. This is 48-50 West 69th Street, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. These are two Renaissance Revival-style rowhouses designed by Gilbert A. Schellinger and built in 1892/93, and the application is to amend and approve for the construction of rooftop additions, reconstruct and redesign rear facades, modify front areaways, and a portion of one of the facades install windows and excavation work.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Avenue 111, Preservation Staff. This application is to amend approval for work at 48 and 50 West 69th Street related to the combining of the two rowhouses in one. The buildings are located on the south side of West 69th Street, between Central Park West and the South Side, and the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Some Commissioners may recall that in July of 2014, the Commission approved a proposal to replace wood windows, including these arch-headed windows with metal-clad windows throughout both facades. The construction of a masonry balcony at the parapet level of number 50, replacement of areaway walls, construction of a rooftop addition, and the reconstruction of the rear facades at both 48 and 50. This proposal includes minor adjustments to the proposed rooftop addition, which will not result in any visibility from the public thoroughfare, and at the front of the building, changes to the design of the proposed balcony and the areaway walls. Additionally, this proposal includes the modification of an existing window at the stoop at 48 to incorporate a door. Here's the lower portion of that. The lowering of the gray level at the areaway at 50 to align with the gray level at 48. An additional excavation beneath both buildings and a rear yard, as well as additional modifications to the rear facades, including the construction of a one-story greenhouse adjacent to the existing extension at 50, and modifications to existing and proposed masonry openings throughout both buildings and the parapets. This is a depiction of what was approved at the July 14 hearing. Some Commissioners may recall that when this proposal was initially presented out at time, the Commission approved the proposal with two stipulations. The first was to incorporate horizontal fans into these proposed large windows of the rear facades, as well as maintaining all of the window openings at the top floors, original locations at both buildings. The applicants are requesting to modify the location of select windows at the top floors of both buildings in order to accommodate structural elements, and the applicant's here to discuss all the changes in detail.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Abby Rudi for Biggs Place Park. We are the preservation consultants for the project. As Abby said, this is a modification to the 2014 approval for the combination of these two buildings. On the left is number 48, and on the right is number 50. 48 was restored in 2007. Number 50 is in its unrestored condition, and as part of the overall project, there's an extensive restoration proposed for this number 50. And here, we see this is the existing condition on the left, the approved condition for the 2014 hearing, and the proposed condition on the right. As Abby said, the overall approval was for a rooftop addition that extended across the whole with the both buildings. A new Juliet balcony at the first floor in the location of the former stoop, and a new areaway wall at the street level. And so this proposal, and for the reconstruction of the rear elevations, this proposal's really design modifications to those areas of the approved scope, and then three additional areas. The enlargement of the window at the basement level on the stoop, the addition of -- I'm sorry. At the stoop, which is located here, and it requires dropping the sill level. This is a sort of minor change, minimal removal of masonry material, and it doesn't disrupt, as you can see in this photograph, you can see it doesn't, because of the stoop conditions, doesn't disrupt the continuity or reading of the areas, areaways. At the rear elevation, you can see that we really modified and made it to sort of more refined design identity on the rear. The rooftop addition has been reduced in footprint. This actually is set back exactly the same as it was before. It doesn't change in terms of the relationship to the front facade, but it is reduced by six feet on the side. The mechanicals have been located on the rooftop behind a mechanical enclosure, but that will not be visible. At the basement level, there is a new greenhouse enclosure off of the existing extension, which is in keeping with other types of extensions and projections in the block, which we'll see later in the presentation. There's also excavation for a new subcellar below the subcellar level, and that will be in keeping with the Commission's regular approvals, setback from the rear property line, as typical. As Abby explained, the Commission's requirements were to institute this horizontal band to sort of recall the residential scale of the oversized openings at the first and second floors, and that has been further refined in this proposal to really break down the scale of those windows in terms of the lights and the spandrel. At the top story, the windows are being maintained in terms of size and number, and they do recall the two-building configuration, maintaining the division between the two buildings. The minor change is for structural reinforcement. Silman's office are the engineers, and Joe Malano is here to talk about it, for seismic requirements for the moment for it to cope compliance. And then we can just see some existing conditions of the rear elevation. This is number 50 on the left and number 48 on the right. As with the front facade restoration, all of this work was done in 1997. The window openings have already been changed on this facade, as was the original rooftop addition approved at that time. This is the overall condition of the rear facade, and really, the owner's desire grew out of this aesthetic, of this approved condition, wanting to sort of establish that for the adjacent property. This is the existing extension, two-story extension on number 48, and the projecting balcony at this level, which is similar to what would be proposed at the garden level. Oliver Pope is the new architect for the project, and he's here to describe the design changes in detail.
Okay, okay, okay. There's some --
Thank you, Erin. Erin, I think you've done a pretty good job going through the list of changes. I know we've been only allocated about 15 minutes. Would you like me just to take questions, or would you --
I think that's fine. Are there any questions? Does anybody want, would like him to walk through some of the details? I thought Erin was pretty comprehensive. No questions? We'll take testimony, and if there's any questions after that, we can have you back here. Sean Korsandi?
Good afternoon again, Commissioner Sean Korsandi for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee is pleased to see the applicant's plans to restore some of the details at number 50, particularly the cornice. Additionally, the committee adopts, accepts the increased height on the rooftop addition as it remains setback from the street. Despite this, many of the issues raised in the committee's review of the original application remain unaddressed. In 2014, the CFA committee stated that it could not, quote, "condone the proposal for a new Juliet balcony," quote, and urged the applicant to respectfully restore the original stoop at number 50. The combination of houses 48 and 50 is contrary to the original design and intent of the architecture. The reintroduction of the stoop would minimize the impression that this combination leaves on the streetscape, maintaining the unified appearance of, quote, "high stoops and earth tones of brick and brownstone facades," cited as significant in the 1990 designation. The same issues arise on the rear elevation. The committee supports the reintroduction of red brick on the rear facade of number 50. However, the alteration of the top-story fenestration on the pair leaves no indication that these two buildings were once separate structures. While the proposed multi-story arched windows on both houses give more of an impression of a ballroom than a backyard on the Upper West Side, the negative effects of these alterations can be counteracted by maintaining the original size and arrangement of the top-story windows. Ultimately, while the CFA committee approves the owner's attempts to restore elements on this pair of rowhouses, it sees the failure to reintroduce the stoop at number 50 as a missed opportunity to revisit the original design intent and maintain the streetscape. It's unfortunate that the client is spending money on extra muttons and detailing the rear facade windows while neglecting to restore key components of the house's original public appearance. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee asks the LPC to revisit the alterations accepted originally with particular consideration to number 50 stoop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there other speakers on this item? Community Board Seven recommends conditional approval dependent upon the mechanical equipment being located on the building roof, not on the rooftop addition. Okay, do you want to respond to that, or just on the --
Just one small item. I don't have a lot to say, but if I can get to the rear elevation. We made -- oh, the next one. There we go. We made one change here, which is in an effort to acknowledge the desire to, especially from the fourth floor up, the recognition of the fact that there are two houses. We interrupted the power, the railing to appear here and separated those two rather than the continuous rail that was approved previously. It's a small gesture.
I'd just like to add, I think that with regard to the Juliet balcony, the, you know, the Commission approved in 2014. The intent was that the balcony really did try to establish some sort of rhythm that was a nod to the original stoop configuration, and that --
some sort of rhythm that was a nod to the original stoop configuration, and that you can see it in the rendering, I got a little slower here, sorry, here, that it really tries to establish some sort of hierarchy in the facade, and that is, you know, maintaining this proposal. We think it's rather consistent, given the history of change to the building.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I think I'm in agreement with the interest to keep the buildings reading as distinct on the street, but I'm actually very interested in this new approach to the rear and think that it's interesting and maybe even appropriate to see this, the combined building in its full 41-foot width on the back read as a single building. And I find it interesting. I realize that it's different from the way we typically approach this, or different from the way I might otherwise, but I'm, you know, that these overscaled windows in the one building sort of give me some kind of comfort in imagining they're continuing to the adjacent.
Okay, are there comments? All right, are we okay with the changes that they've proposed? Okay. All right.
In the matter of 48-50, West 69th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is an application to amend an approval for the construction of rooftop additions, reconstruct and redesign rear facades, modify front areaways in a proportion of one of the facades, install windows, and excavation. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the replacement of limited amount of brownstone and historic grill featuring a common design at a relatively discreet area of the stoop will not eliminate any prominent or highly unique features. That the enlarged opening and gate at the stoop will be well scaled for their context and feature design details derived from the existing masonry surround and grill, helping the alteration to remain a discreet and harmonious presence. That the modifications of the design details of the previously approved front facade balcony and areaway work will be harmonious with the design of the building and in keeping with the historic ornamentation typically found at facades and areaways at buildings of this type, style, and age in terms of level of articulation. That the light fixture will be simply designed, typical in placement, and well scaled to the stoop. That the proposed one-story rear addition and balconies will be small in scale in relation to the building and to existing rear additions at neighboring buildings, and will not eliminate the presence of a rear yard. That the cumulative effect of the existing rear additions, previously approved rooftop addition, and currently proposed rear addition and balconies will not overwhelm the building. That the window openings at the top floor of the rear facades of the neighboring properties feature variations in spacing, therefore, the slight shifting in placement of the top floor windows will be a subtle variation, which is harmonious with the historic pattern at this block. That the changes to the design details of the previously approved monumental windows at the rear facade and existing rear addition, and the size and number of openings at the existing addition, will incorporate horizontal bands which are reflective of the floor level locations and help the openings maintain a residential scale. That the incorporation of piers at the parapet and decorative masonry surrounds and band courses into the previously approved reconstruction of the rear facades will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the increase in grade level at the rear of the yard, rear of the yard, will be modest, will be a modest adjustment, and the proposed rear yard wall will be adjacent to an existing masonry wall of equivalent height at a neighboring property. Therefore, this work will not detract from the relationship of the rear yard to the house or surrounding yards. That the proposed excavation will not extend to the rear lot line and will be set back from the rear lot line, thereby maintaining a five-foot area for significant plantings in the rear yard. That the excavation and related underpinning will be done in compliance with Department of Buildings regulations, under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer or registered architect, to protect the building's facades and adjacent buildings. And that none of the proposed work of the roofs and rear facades will be visible from a public thoroughfare, or overwhelm the building, or detract from the special architectural or historic character of the buildings or the site.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the case is approved.
Okay, Commissioner's next is docket number 18-5898. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness borough Manhattan docket. I said that. Address is 32 East 68th Street, located within the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a residence built in 1879 with facade alterations by Prescott and Scott in 1927, and the application is to install an awning.
Kate Forrest, Preservation Staff. The application is for 32 East 68th Street, located on the south side of the street between Madison and Park Avenues in the Upper East Side Historic District. The applicant did not be present today due to a family emergency, but has requested for and given his permission to have his proposal prevented before the commission by staff. The proposal is to remove an awning installed without Landmark's Preservation Commission permits and to install a new awning. The building seen here was built in 1879 by R.W. Buckley. However, the present facade is highly altered and was designed by Prescott and, going off the, and was designed by Prescott and Scott, constructed in 1927 to include this bump out here on the basement and first floors. It is a historically residential building with no evidence of historic commercial use. The illegal awning seen here was added sometime before the spring of 2016 and is currently subject to a warning letter from the Enforcement Department. The proposed awning shown here will be fixed, will be fixed and feature a black matte canvas with an unfixed skirt. We mounted approximately 10 inches above the window lintel to maintain the height requirements of the awning from the ground. The applicant is also proposing lettering on the skirt to serve signage for the business at the basement level.
Are there any questions? Okay. We have one speaker, Elizabeth Fagan.
Elizabeth Fagan, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. The proposed awning is simple, unobtrusive, and in keeping with the character of other awnings in the district. The change from the existing awning to the proposed awning is very minimal, and Friends can support this application. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? The Community Board, Community Board 8 recommends approval. Do we have any other questions for our staff? Okay, so we can move to decision. Dean?
In the matter of docket number 18-5898, 32 East 68th Street, Upper East Side Historic District, residential building built in 1879, alterations by Prescott and Scott in 1927, the application is to install an awning. I note that the building which was altered in 1927 is not one of the buildings for which the historic district is there. We need to recommend approval, finding that the replacement of the awning will not alter, eliminate, or conceal any significant architectural features, that the presence of this awning at this altered building, at the end of the row and close to Madison Avenue, which features numerous residential buildings, the ground floors will also be used, will be compatible with the carpet, the surrounding contact, and will reflect the historic evolution of row houses in this neighborhood of residential historic buildings. That the proposed awning will be well proportioned to the masonry opening and typical awnings balanced throughout the historic district in terms of plating materials, slotted floor tile, undergrain skirts, and finish, helping to maintain a harmonious presence within the streetscape. And that the signage on the awning will be limited to the awning skirt and will not draw undue attention to this installation.
All in favor? Any opposed? Case is approved.
Okay, Commissioner's, one last item, and it's an application for a certificate of appropriateness borough Manhattan, docket number 18-2272. This is 1155th Avenue, located within the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. This is a neo-Georgian-style apartment building designed by J.E.R. Carpenter and built in 1923-24. The application is to construct a rooftop addition.
The distance currently being taken from the enforcement department, the application for use is to enlarge an existing rooftop addition, which was early prior to designation of the historic district. This is the addition. And the proposal is to extend it back from the 50th Avenue stop. But it is the same material that we have in some of these areas. And, uh, in Dogg's yard, that's typical, we can do that. How does that serve you?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Preservationists. I'm Robert Bischoff, the architect for the project. As you've heard, it's, there's an existing penthouse structure that was built circa 1999, and we are proposing an addition in the rear courtyard. It is visible from an alleyway on the north side of the building between our building, 1155th Avenue, and the adjacent building, 1158 Fifth Avenue. So if you look from the street on Fifth Avenue, or going back further in the park, it is visible. This is, the blue is the mock-up of the north wall, which is the visible portion from the street. And you can see the wedge-shaped piece gives you the range of visibility in certain locations in the park across the street, or from Fifth Avenue, through that alleyway between the two buildings. This is taken from the inner courtyard, looking toward the area of the proposed addition. So the, you can see the scaffolding and the blue mesh mock-up of the north facade, the alleyway and the neighbor to the north. These are the floor plans. Basically, our addition is in the upper right. It's a duplex penthouse, and the addition is a duplex addition, so it's two levels. We're aligning with the existing north facade of the building, and we're aligning with the rooftop, and we're matching materials. This just shows you the existing and proposed elevations. Really, the one in question is the one on the left, which is the north facade, which is visible if you look up at an angle through that alleyway. Street elevations and sections. This is a section through showing the facade. We did incorporate a parapet. We had a concern that there was a 15-story drop into that alleyway, so we were concerned for the safety of firemen if there were someone up there in the event of an emergency. We didn't, we wanted some protection. We thought a railing would just draw more attention to it, so we matched the material. It's just some photographs of the existing material, pencil on there for scale. On the bottom photo shows you the existing north wall in this material, which is the stucco over insulation board, EFS. And so we have a section of that next to an existing brick, I think it's a ventilation flue, vent stack flue. So we're going to replicate that condition. The section on the left shows you where it meets the existing parapet. So the existing parapet remains and coping, and we matched the condition of the section of wall immediately adjacent. These are just street facade, street views. And so really, the question was in the massing, you know, which material to go with on the north facade? Should we go with brick, or should we go with the stucco finish? And we decided that the stucco would be more appropriate because we have that one section immediately adjacent to us of the existing penthouse. So we thought that would appear better in the massing. I'll try to flip back to that quickly. So you can see this, two shots from different angles in the park with a telephoto lens and on the, across the street on Fifth Avenue. But you can see that there is a little piece of existing stucco wall there. So we felt that if we were to do our addition in brick, we would isolate that piece and it looked more awkward than matching. So that was our logic behind that massing and finish decision. And that's it. I thank you for your consideration and time to present.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have a few speakers. Elizabeth Fagan.
Hi, Elizabeth Fagan, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. The proposed penthouse extension is to Friends, minimal in terms of visibility, although it will add bulk to an already dense penthouse level. A number of buildings in the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District have suffered from inappropriate pre-designation alterations, including rooftop additions. While this building already has a large penthouse, this proposal's use of matching stucco and a contextual height and scale are appropriate here. Because this extension will only be visible from the street and park, Friends can support this addition, although it should not be considered a precedent for others. Thank you.
Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This J.E.R. Carpenter apartment building already has a two-story penthouse on top of it, and HDC understands that the building is currently built to its zoning capacity and will need a special permit to allow more of this bulk here today. Even if this wasn't the case, this addition seems clumsy as EIFS does not have a reputation for being a quality, long-lasting material. The proposed addition doesn't match the uniform roofline and hovers over it. For all of the consideration and design that goes into most penthouse additions in this part of town, this bulk falls short of terms of appropriateness, visibility, and quality of architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Community Board 11 recommends approval of this project, or supports this project, and we also received a letter from Carnegie Hill Neighbors. They do not support the addition. Do we have any other questions for our applicant? We can close the hearing.
So, motion.
All right, comments? Yes, Michael.
I think that in terms of all the visibility, it's fine. I think I'm lucky that there's a pile of junk on top of the building already. Very unfortunate, but I think the only concern that I have is the use of EFS, which is the material that this commission is consisting of. It is already there, and maybe that is a basis for allowing it. Gosh, I don't know if it is a...
Okay, other comments? Yes, Michael.
I'm wondering if the applicant considered replacing the EFS that's on that little strip with brick, if that might be a possibility. And then, brick becomes a more appropriate material.
Tail wagging the dog.
Yes, Caroline? Yes, Caroline?
He says that if he was calling, probably if it was a problem, he would really to say that they-
They would do it? Okay, so if we basically modify this and ask them to put brick? Okay. All right, that's good. John?
In the matter of docket number 18-2272, 1155th Avenue, in the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District, application is to construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed addition will be setback from the primary facade behind an existing two-story rooftop addition that was present at the time of designation of the Historic District, that the addition will be only minimally visible over the secondary north facade and beyond the existing addition from the west and through an opening in the street wall, that the proposed two-story height, material, and finish of the new addition will be replaced with brick to make the existing wall and the new one match, which will extend throughout the entire roof and was built prior to the designation of the Historic District. Construction of that, the construction of the rooftop addition will not result in any damage to or demolition of a significant architectural feature of the roof or the structure on which it is constructed, that the proposed plane of the addition at the secondary north facade of the interior face of the building's roof parapet and related stone coping will align with that of the minimally visible northern portion of the existing addition at this facade, and will maintain the historic parapet and coping at the building, that the proposed planes of the addition at the interior faces of the roof parapets at the secondary courtyard facades will be in keeping with this established north facade plane, that creating a parapet at the visible portion of the existing addition at the north facade to align with the parapets at the new addition will not significantly increase the apparent massing or visibility of the addition, and that the proposed addition, therefore, will maintain the significant architectural and historic character of the building and the Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved, and we will break for lunch and come back at 1:30. 1:30?